Everyone, thank you for joining us at our Community Development Public Hearing. It is July 25th, 2024. The time is 10:00 a.m. And in attendance are Commissioners Matarri and Duncan, and Commissioner Brooks is joining us by phone. I have no opening remarks this morning. Are there changes to the agenda? Okay, and conflicts of interest?
No conflicts.
Okay. And then is Bill able to chime in there?
Yeah, no conflicts.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we will start with item one, which is ZON 24-0002, Party of Epps. And this is a public hearing for rezoning. And I believe that Commissioner Matarri requests that we deliberate at a later date. We have kind of a packed agenda this morning, so if we can, I don't have my calendar up here, but it would be the eighth, maybe? Is that? Okay. Okay. There we go. All right, so I will let Vlad start with the presentation.
Good morning Commissioners, for the record, Vlad Finkel with Cooten County Community Development. This is a request by Mr. and Mrs. Epps, case number ZON 24-0002, to rezone a five-acre parcel of land from rural to agricultural suburban. The main, the primary purpose of the rezone is to be able to subdivide the five-acre piece into two lots. As you know, the minimum lot size in the rural zone is five acre, therefore, the applicant currently is unable to conduct a minor subdivision unless they rezone it to agricultural suburban, which has a minimum lot size of two acres. The property is located on the west side of Cooten County, near Hauser Lake, off of Love Court Road, with the intersecting with Rice Road. The property is fairly level. It has an existing shop on site, and no primary residence has been established at this time. The property has some vegetation on it, near the proximity of the shop, as well as to the north. The property is located within the City of Hauser area of City Impact. Pursuant to the Cooten County Land Use and Development Code, the county is obligated to solicit comments from the City of Hauser in order to have the city review the proposed rezone or any other development for impacts that may be associated with their request. The zoning, as I stated, is currently rural, and the comp plan designation is transitional. These are some of the photos of the property in question. As I stated, it only has a shop on site at this time. During the agency comment period, we solicited comments from the agencies listed on the slide. All the agencies were in support or had no issue with the proposed rezone. During the first public comment period before the hearing examiner, we received three comments in opposition, one neutral, and one in support. That was a late comment. The concerns that were raised by the folks who were in opposition of the request were stemming from their interpretation of the CCNRs that encumbered the property, which in their mind, didn't, they claimed that the CCNRs do not allow for the parcels to be further subdivided. We have reviewed the CCNRs. We brought it to our legal counsel at our project review meeting, and it was concluded by both our legal counsel and the department that the CCNRs do not prevent the applicant from being able to pursue a rezone and subdivide the property. Some of the other concerns were raised with regards to the use of the existing shop and the modifications that were made to the interior of that shop, including a loft that was unpermitted, as well as the use of a travel trailer on site on a permanent basis without having an established primary residence on site. The code currently states that you can occupy a travel trailer on the property on a intermittent basis without having first established a primary residence. So, based on the information that we received from the neighbors, we concluded that the proposed, that we conducted a site visit, and we concluded that in fact, there were concerns, some of the concerns were legitimate with respect to the use of the, of the travel trailer, as well as the improvements that were made to the loft inside the shop. Additionally, we advised the applicant that we would be issuing a code violation, but we would allow the applicant to move forward with a public hearing before the hearing examiner, because at that point, the notice was already mailed out, and we had it in the local press. So, we moved forward with a public hearing with the understanding that we would be issuing code violations that would need to be resolved before we would have the hearing before you today. In addition to that, we found that the comprehensive plan, the surrounding residential development parcel sizes and zoning did allow for the, or did support the applicant's request for a zone change. So, aside from the concerns and the code violations that were brought forward, we felt that the request to do a zone change was appropriate and would not be detrimental to the neighboring properties or community. We expressed those details at the hearing before the hearing examiner on May 2nd of this year. Based on a site visit, we conducted, there were a number of code violations that we issued. Following the hearing examiner's hearing, these code violations were all resolved. In fact, the applicant has submitted a residential building permit for the construction of a primary residence on site. So, at this point, the code violations in, in staff's view are a non-issue or a moot point. But I did want to clarify that those issues held up the project moving forward following the May 2nd hearing to today's date. During the second public comment period for today's hearing, we received additional comments with one in opposition, one neutral, and two in support. One of the comments in support was from an individual who submitted a late comment with retracting or basically withdrawing their initial concerns regarding the code violations that I just mentioned to you. And I would like to enter that into the record.
Read into the record is B 1001.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having said that, we find that the proposal is feasible to rezone the subject property and should be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. We do not have any outstanding code violations that would prevent you from making a decision to approve this request. We have our code enforcement, Craig Davidson, here to answer any questions that you may have on code violations. And if you do not, then I do not have anything else to add to my presentation unless you have questions for me.
Bill, any questions?
I have no questions.
Bruce?
I do have a question. On that particular image right there, it looks like we're going to be changing, you know, allowing a block that is zoned rural to now have a parcel in there that's zoned agricultural suburban. What is a sufficient buffer of agricultural suburban outside of the city? I realize that's in the ACI, but, you know, is this just an exception for this particular applicant? Or should all the other lots in there be considered for rezoning?
I don't think this is an exception, as you can see, south of Rice Road, there are parcels that are zoned agricultural suburban to the west of the subject property and to the east of the subject property. Immediately to the north, to the north of the subject property, you have a, a number of parcels that are zoned agricultural suburban in the county. These parcels are all within the city limits, as well as these. So, I don't, I don't find that this request is particularly different than any other request. You have adjoining zoning designations that are identical to what's being requested, being agricultural suburban to the north. So, this is, I would not consider this being spot zoning if that's what you implied in your question.
No, the, the question is geared more towards what is the buffer? What, how much should the buffer be? You know, because it could metastasize throughout the county, in essence, you know, that, well...
Buffer from what?
Well, you have the agricultural suburban right outside the city of Hauser. So, take the green section. How far down should it shift to have a reasonable buffer? You know, we're, we're not looking at these on one-off cases, but in fact, you know, that whole area should probably be agricultural suburban.
You raise a good question. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't fully understand your question about the buffer zone, but this is a quasi judicial matter where we have an individual requesting a single parcel of land to be rezoned. What you're referring to is having a blanket rezone would be a more of a legislative matter that would likely need to be brought forward by the, by staff. But there's really no, if, the ACI, the area of City Impact for City of Hauser, does not have specific buffer zones for specific zoning designations in proximity to their city limits, if that's what you're asking. There's no distance limitation on specific zoning.
Yeah.
But as you can see, the parcels in the city are less than, some of these parcels are about an acre in size. Some of these parcels outside of the city limits in the county are also about acre, two acre in size. If the, if the apps were to have that property be rezoned to agricultural suburban, they could create two and a half acre parcels, two, two and a half acre parcels. And in our, in, in staff's view, those resulting parcels would still be greater in size than some of these adjoining parcels to the north. So, it would not be, they, they would not be creating parcels that would be non-compatible. They, they in fact would be compatible with the existing residential development in the area.
Yeah, and I guess just moving south or further down, you know, the lot underneath that, they could say, well, the lot above me wants to change to agricultural suburban. So, I want to change mine, and then the lot underneath that, and then the lot underneath that. And so, my point is really where, where is that line drawn? Where you say, you know, the zoning is the zoning. And yes, you might be next door to a, a different zone, but where, where does it, where do you draw that line, in essence?
I think that's the prerogative of the board. Unfortunately, we, when we entertain a zone change, we, we...
Yeah, see, that's the case...
Review it based on its merits. We don't look at the global impact of adjoining parcels going onboard and doing the same thing.
Yeah.
Commissioners, if I may? David Callahan, Community Development Director. These kinds of rezonings are always a tad bit subjective. And especially in our circumstances, meaning our current comp plan and current development code, don't argue against this sort of thing. So, as long as it's not in conflict, the staff tends to recommend approval. That could change with your direction. We, there are lots of municipalities in this country that make a decision that, you know, that road line ought to be the end point for any additional, well, to prohibit any changes of future zoning.
Yeah.
That's a policy issue. And arguably, it ought to be set forth in the comp plan first, and then the code would follow, so that it's clear what sorts of, of incursions into existing zoning you're willing to tolerate, if you will.
And then, we're still using maybe the older ACI rules until we get the new ones in place by January.
Yes, we have to, right.
Correct. Yeah, that actually would provide a golden opportunity to address those issues.
Yep.
Whereas the last time, last, this is the, actually the ACI that changed most recently, and we basically just went back to the zoning prior to, you know, when we were, you know, basically implementing the Hauser Development Code. And so, it's probably, especially looking at the lot lines in the area, it's probably somewhat out of date. For one thing, the ex-suburban zone at one time allowed parcels as small as 8,250 square feet. Now, the, now that minimum parcel size is two acres. And so, I don't think that change is well reflected in, in the existing zoning in the Hauser ACI. I, I think arguably, to Commissioner Matarri's point, you could make the argument that all those parcels should be rezoned to ex-suburban. You could probably make an argument that they should stay rural, too. But again, that's, that's within the prerogative of the board.
Yeah, and my question wasn't geared towards not doing something. My question is geared towards the, are we going through a formality? Or, or are we actually making a decision here? Because it sounds like the, the formality would be, well, all the indicators point that we should be changing this. Where I'm trying to figure out, you know, the indicators in the comp plan, indicators that, you know, when we have a request like this, it's okay, and that we should be approving these almost as a, an automatic? Or, or, you know, do we have any kind of policy that states, you know, that, that you have the city, and then you have these rings around the city of, of zoning? And I've been in other meetings where we've talked where it's normal to have commercial, light industrial, and then maybe a heavy industrial, or things like, you know, that kind of zoning, where they tend to be around each other, where you won't have a heavy industrial right next to a residential zoned place, but you might have commercial next to it. And so, that's where the question is geared toward, is where, where are those lines supposed to be? And are they arbitrarily defined? Or are, do we have some methodology that makes sense? Because once we say yes to this, it just opens the door for other folks to start doing that, if they want. And then at that point, what's the point of having us make these decisions if there is nothing really for us to fall back on and say, well, you know, based upon this criteria that we have established, we should or should not be approving them?
Commissioner Matarri, if I may? If you, if you look at the hearing examiner's report on the comp plan designation provision, the transitional designation identifies areas that may be appropriate for urban development and inclusion in the future, when circumstances, circumstances are appropriate. The transitional designation enables the city to plan and phase growth based on the need and ability to provide the necessary facilities and services to support additional growth. Clearly, a rezone and subsequent subdivision would gear the subject property towards more urban density, because of one dwelling per five acres is more rural or, you know, subrural type of development. And in this case, the city did not oppose this. So, just in review of that assessment of transitional designation, it seems if the city is not opposed to it, and we can allow for more urban development immediately or within the close proximity to the city limits, that it would actually be, that could actually be annexed at some point in the future. In our view, it doesn't seem to be detrimental long-term.
The City of Hauser doesn't seem to be trying to grow like other cities and expand. So, I, while I hear that, you know, the ifs and the coulds and the mayes, you know, yes, that can happen. But we also just have to look at the, you know, the reality of things, too. And, you know, again, I'm just trying to understand, is there, is there a reasonable amount of land around a city that should have this higher density designation? And where is that line? And that's all. So, that, that was, those are my questions.
Yes.
Commissioners, if you'll pardon the old expression that I grew up with from Lyndon Johnson, "I could preach this round, or I could preach it flat." There is no absolute right answer to these kinds of things. And the current comp plan and the current code don't address your issue. If you would like us to start considering those things, we certainly can, especially in this update.
I would.
And again, you know, you've made a cogent rational basis for denial if you have a second vote. And that's a, as Vlad said earlier, that's an entirely board decision. We're just trying to give you what the current view is from the staff based on our current regulations and policy.
Well, look, it's not, it's not with the intention of looking for denial. What it is, is that as this community continues to grow, and it becomes more dense, you're going to have to have more defined policies on what is and is not allowed. And, and so, I think that's where a lot of the frustration is in the community, because they keep driving through the prairie, and they go, oh, what, you know, there's a new tract housing development that's growing, and that wasn't there, you know, it seemed to be a few weeks ago. And so, people don't really understand what, what is exactly is happening. And of course, the other side of this is the fact that as we continue to grow, so too must government, and so too must the taxes, because the growth at this point in time doesn't pay for itself. And so, I think just kind of tightening up these policies will help to, for people to better understand what is happening and why it's happening. And granted, this is just one small, particular issue, but we're also tasked with the, the bigger picture of things, too. And, and that's really where the, the catalyst is for these questions.
This'd be a good dialogue to have with the public once we go from our data collection to policy discussion.
Well, perhaps if there's an opportunity between now and next week, or in the following quarter, we can put together some information and make that a discussion point at these Commissioner Town Halls.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vlad. Rick Epps is the applicant and wishes to speak.
Yes, my name is Rick Epps. I live at 9806 North Love Court, and that's the property that's in concern. When I moved onto this property and purchased it, I had realtors, I had the title companies, banks, all look into what I could do in the future. And by county laws and principles and rules and regulations, all said that, yes, you're able to do this, future, in the future, if I needed to. And then I'm hearing things this morning, like, well, that things may change when current, as of today, I have the right to do this as a citizen of Idaho. And it, it concerns me. And, yeah, this was something where the intent here is to make a two-acre parcel for my daughter and son-in-law to live there to help, help with us in a single, single-house dwelling. And ours will be a single-house dwelling, a single-family dwelling. So, this is a little confusing to me. On, which doesn't show on this map here, there's another subdivision just, let's see, that would be just south of this, yeah, just south of this in the brown. Before that, up on the hill there, there is an entire subdivision that are approximately eight acres, I mean, one acre parcels, all the way across, completely surrounding this. So, the land mass is, is already been agreed to, and this is a center mass in this configuration. So, it doesn't make any sense that something that I'm requesting today, that, that cannot be done by current regulations and laws. This, what happens in the future is, is up to the board, of course, in the future. But today, this is what we're asking for. What is the right to be done, and what's legal, and what's correct? And all, all agencies have approved. So, that's just where my standing is, and, and thank you for listening to me. Any questions for me?
I do. Were, were you given any of these statements in writing from people when you purchased the land? That, that, that you would be allowed to subdivide it below the five-acre minimum lot size for a rural zone?
No, just that rural can go to suburban, just county laws.
Did they tell you that it was subject to the, the board's approval?
No, no, they did not.
Okay, because, I mean, look, we, we get these issues before us a lot, and I, I often ask, why are we making these decisions on these individual bases? But the reason for them is because they go outside of the norm, and it's always subject to the board's approval on this stuff, and, and it's subject to that. So, I'm sorry that you were not given the, the complete story about what goes on with respect to what you're able to do, because if it, if it's zoned rural, it's a five-acre minimum lot size, and that the only way that can be changed is with the board's approval. Not that it would be an automatic given. You know, if, if you had a 10-acre lot, and you're in rural, you could subdivide into two five-acre lots without any board approval. So, I'm sorry that that wasn't disclosed, and that seems to happen probably a little more than it should. But, okay, th- those are my questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, Stan Young in favor wishes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Stan Young. I own the property right next to the Epps on the east side. And for the history of that property there, both of them, that was supposed to have been a, it was set aside for a school in the original, when they started developing all that. Then they allowed it to be divided into five-acre pieces. So, we picked up the one, they got the other one. And in doing so, we had researched, too, because we had prior incidences where we lived before, where they had CCRs, and we had self-proclaimed CCR czars that came in and wanted to make all kinds of accusations, called the county on everybody that lived in there for whatever they were doing and everything else. And they interpreted the CCRs and the development stuff the way they wanted to determine it, and we always had issues. So, we looked into it, and we were told there was no CCRs, there was nothing in that area when we bought it as well, because we didn't want to deal with that issue again. So, now you have CCR czars that are trying to overlook the Epps in what they're doing. And I watch these people that live around there that are doing the complaining, and I almost think they need to go to the doctor's for neck injuries, because they rubberneck so much as they go by the property all the time to see what they're doing. And you probably already have complaints from these people, and I know they've complained on some other construction in the same area. And the county's been out numerous times on all of it going on. And to me, it's a waste of time. The two-acre and the three-acre parcel that they want to divide to doesn't affect us. My wife and I, we don't care, because we're right next door. We're the ones that are going to be really affected, not the ones across the street, not the ones at the end of the cul-de-sac. It would be us, because we'd be right next door, and we could see it. And we have no objection to this. I, what I hear from you guys today is there's old laws, old policies, and things. It, it was the good old boy system years ago, and how it's trying to change now. We didn't buy into the now, we bought when it was there. So, it, it, trying to apply something now, that you're doing now, to what was done when we had bought and they had bought, is kind of a, it'll miss, you know, understanding of the whole project of what's going on. There is even so far as a... There is even so far as, uh, one of the CCR czars that has a camera pointed at their property, at the front of their property, that likes to count cars, how many people, who comes and goes, everything else.
Sir, yeah, your time is up.
Oh, anyway, I want to thank you for the time here, but it just, there's no complaints with us.
Okay.
And like he said, there is a subdivision above us.
Thank you.
That has 75 homes zoned for that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Brandy Epps in favor may wish to speak? Okay. And Rob, oh, I guess it's Ellen, Rob and Brian Hoff in favor may wish to speak?
Good morning. My name's Rob Hoff and I live next to Stan Young. I'm two doors down to the right of the Epps. Career in banking back in Missouri, and I'm a big proponent of planning and zoning. I see the values of it. I also try to read what is currently in place. When we bought our property three years ago, it was interesting to me that it had a rural classification, but that it did have the option to move it to an ag suburban based on what the county codes are right now. So we followed this with quite interest just to see how it develops. We've also watched this large subdivision to the south of us on the, on the ridge be developed. And it's controlled growth. And that's what I've always been a proponent of is controlled growth, not trying to limit it, not try to have too many people put their hands into what we can and cannot do. I think there's a right of free enjoyment to our properties when we buy them as long as we stay within the laws and the codes that are on the books. So we're very much in support of what Rick and, and Ronette want to do with their property, move it to two and three acres. It has no impact on us. We have the same philosophy. It'd be nice to have our kids live on our property. In fact, we have our adult son living there so that as we age, he will be there to help us take, uh, take care of us. So we think this makes sense and we're in favor of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ronette Epps in favor may wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Ronette Epps and I am the owner of the lot that we are trying to subdivide. I'm a little confused this morning as we received approval on all aspects. We are trying to do it for medical reasons to have, uh, we didn't intend to subdivide the property, but medical reasons are forcing us to. So I have to ask a question with you. And that is, we all have a choice. We bought the property, we paid taxes on the property. We were told that it was in the zoning to be able to rezone to ag. We're not putting a subdivision on our property. It really doesn't affect the people on our street with the property other than they will see one more house. So the question is, if we, if you approve ours, that is our decision that we decided to go forth with the zoning, why would it impact, why would you feel that you'd have to change everyone on, on that street or on Rice Road or the whole development? Because I think I'm hearing that now the board would want to change all because of our rezoning. So I'm a little confused.
The question was geared towards our community development because we have a constructive reliance upon their recommendations. And so the question was more rhetorical. It wasn't actual as far as the community itself. It was if one, why not the other? You know, what is the, what is the basis for it? What is the rationale? And is there not some guidelines for us to follow? And one of the challenges of, is the fact that many of these rules, when they were established, it was a much smaller community. And as the community has continued to grow, as there is more density, those rules which worked well or better with a smaller community become blurry, you know? And just like the fact that you were told that you could change the zone, and in fact, any property owner has the ability, I believe, to request a zone change. The question that a lot of people don't realize or what they're not aware of is the fact that those zone changes are subject to the board's approval. Not, it's an, it's not an automatic right. And I think that's where there was some confusion. My questions were more rhetorical. They were not geared towards the entire community and us changing the zone there.
Okay, so the, the question would be, then if we do decide, you decide to approve or deny, the denial would be one more house. Is that right?
Essentially, all that's before us right now is your zone change. So that's it. One parcel, changing zones. So we don't even have the subdivision in front of us, nothing like that. It's just the zone change. That's all we can rule on today.
Okay, and the, the zone is minimum to two acres minimum?
I, I think so. Yeah, for ag suburban, two acres.
Commissioners, I mean, I think we're, what's being, what's happening is the public is mixing the two processes, the zone change and the, and the subsequent subdivision process that may occur if the zone change is approved. What's before you today is, is exactly what you just stated, Chair Duncan, is, is a request to rezone the subject property from rural to agricultural suburban. The primary, um, the, the main intent or the main goal of assessing a zone change is to analyze the existing surrounding development to determine whether the proposed designation will be compatible and consistent with surrounding conditions. That's what it's for. The applicant may or may not choose to go through a subdivision after the zone change is approved. That's their choice. They may end up selling the property and someone else may retain it as a five acre piece without any desire to subdivide it. So I think it's, it's, I think it's a bit inappropriate to mix the two processes at today's hearing.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Matt, is it Dee DeSidero? Okay, and in favor does not wish to speak? And Chris Zabriskie, is that right? Opposed does not wish to speak. All right. Anybody else on Zoom that wishes to testify either for or against this zone change? No one? Okay. Then what I would say is that I would take a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations at a date set. And I believe, is that August 8th?
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
I'm okay if you want to go into deliberations and Commissioner Brooks.
Okay, yeah. Bill, are you able to deliberate right now? Is he muted?
Yes, I can deliberate now.
Okay, then I would take a motion to enter into deliberations.
I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations for ZON 24-0002 Epps.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, Bill, did you want to start?
I, I just really have, yes, I have really no problem with this at all. I don't think it's a camel's nose in the tent. Uh, I think some of Bruce's concerns do need to be addressed more in a workshop type of a situation and not in a, uh, a hearing for a particular property. So I'm in favor of this completely.
Okay, Bruce?
You know, one of the things that keeps kind of rearing itself when we have these, uh, these cases before us is the fact that there's a lot of ambiguity that, uh, you know, our decisions oftentimes become arbitrary to a degree. It's just driven by, you know, what our internal policy mechanism is, whether we're totally for people being able to do anything that they want with their property or, you know, we want to have, see at least some restrictions based upon the fact that we've grown rapidly. And the, the more we continue to grow, uh, the more I think inevitably we're going to have to have more rules, more clearly defined boundaries. It's just the nature of it. For this particular situation, I also look at what does the surrounding neighbors have to say? Because they're the ones that are the greatest impacted by any kind of changes that we, you know, that we make as a board. So for this particular situation, I don't see a problem changing the zoning. But what it does provide is an opportunity for us to really look closely at our policies, to start tightening up what once used to be okay because we were a much more rural community, needs to be much more clearly defined moving forward. Because we say yes on this particular property, every other property around it, if they want to make these changes, it's harder for us to say no because we've said yes to all the other, to, to the previous ones. And at some point, we just have to decide what is going to, what are we going to do to maintain the rural nature of this community if all we're doing is increasing the density continuously? And eventually this place will become, you know, much more like a Boise, much more like a Seattle or Spokane. And if that's what people want, then they should have that. But if they don't, we should be listening to them as well. So.
I'm in favor of this zone change because of the surrounding area and the fact that they're in the ACI and the city does not have an issue with it. And yeah, I mean, you know, continuing discussions on what the community wants is fine. I think for me, looking at one-offs or just people who want to split for their neighbors, I'm sorry, split for their family in particular, is different than somebody coming in and buying a section of land and putting 75 homes on it. So I would take a motion to approve.
I move that we approve ZON 24-0002 Epps.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, ZON 24-0002, Party of Epps passes. And now we'll go on to our second public hearing. And you folks are welcome to stay or you may leave if you need to. This is a fee increase resolution and I will start with our director, David Callahan.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning.
Yes. Yes, Bill?
I have to go, I have to leave for a medical appointment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, I just want to let you know.
Okay.
Okay, bye-bye.
Commissioners, David Callahan, Community Development Director. We have followed up on your direction to increase fees. We actually have published in the paper twice as required by law.
How much did that cost?
Thousands, $3,000?
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Real money, but all necessary. And we, we have followed your direction. We've included the reduction, for instance, in the appeal of administrative determinations. It's now $840 instead of $2,770.
Thank you.
And so I believe everything's in order and properly before you.
All right, did we receive any comments?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Anybody here to testify in favor or against the fee increase resolution? Anybody on Zoom?
No one on Zoom but staff at this point.
All right. Any questions for staff before we end public testimony?
No questions.
Okay, motion?
I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations on the fee increase resolution.
Oh, I forgot Bill's gone. Second. Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. This was kind of at board direction, so I'm, I'm fine with it. And I appreciate the appeal being lowered.
Yeah, I'm fine with it as well. But I, I do want to work with community development so that we can really tighten up the processes because there are opportunities by going through that process where we could actually lower fees too. So, but at this point, I don't see why taxpayers should, property tax owners should be subsidizing these kinds of services.
All right, motion?
I move that we approve the fee increase per the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, the resolution passes. Now we are moving on to our deliberations section of our agenda. And this is item three, VAR 23-0012, Party of Carr. And who is going to, oh, all right, start us off.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joseph Foudy with Cootney County Community Development. Staff has prepared a presentation for you for this, for this proposal. If you would like staff to go through it, we can. Unless, of course, you've been given the information from the hearing examiner and you would like to skip that, we can.
Would you like a little presentation?
It probably would be a good idea to run through your FedEx version of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this is a request by the applicant, Don Carr, for a variance to the rear and side yard setbacks for a parcel in the restricted residential zone. The subject property is located in the geographical unincorporated area of Bayview, as you can see on this map. Specifically, it's located directly adjacent to North Hollyhock Street and North Bardell Street, south of East Perimeter Road. Both private roads, Hollyhock and Bardell Street, and the jurisdiction of Timberlake Fire District. The zoning for this parcel is restricted residential, as you know. Or as you may be aware, the minimum lot size for the restricted residential zone is 8,250 square feet or 0.189 acres. The rear yard setback in the restricted residential zone is 25 feet. The side yard setbacks are 10 feet. One thing I'd like to talk about, mention is that, as you can see from the image of this parcel and staff research, it is an extremely tiny lot. Specifically, it is 3,005 square feet in size or 0.69 acres in size. Through staff research, it was determined that the parcel was created prior to 1973 for, per assessor records. Per code, Article 8, 2.482404A, restricted residential zone, parcels created prior to January 3rd, 1973, which are less than 8,250 square feet in size, shall be regarded as conforming. So this parcel is an existing conforming parcel per community development. A manufactured home had been placed on this parcel in 1971 and a variance had been requested in 1979 by the then homeowner to encroach within the setbacks of the 10 feet from the side and the 25 feet from the rear yard setback to add the existing, or the addition, the shop addition, deck, I'm sorry, deck addition that would conform to the boundaries of where the manufactured home were, were already placed at, within that encroachment. Of course, it was placed there before the zoning ordinance was taken effect. In 1979, this was approved for the deck to conform to that existing manufactured home within the setbacks. Site photos, the applicant has cleared this, the site. According to building records, Building Department, December 18th of '23, the site was verified that the manufactured home and deck addition were demolished in accordance with their code. The site photos can show you exactly how narrow that, that lot is to confirm that 3,005 square feet or 0.69 acres. And the image to the bottom right is just a conceptual, maybe, what could be placed on that parcel as, as staff research has indicated, you know, it's, it's possible to build something. as, um, as staff research has indicated, you know, it's, it's possible to build something to that effect on that parcel, um, if this, uh, variance is approved.
But the resident, that's not from the resident. I mean, they're not ex, okay.
No, that's just conceptual in the case that it's approved, something that they might be interested in building onsite. The proposed site plan from the applicant would actually bring the structure into more conformance with the required setbacks. You know, specifically, um, I believe it's five feet on either side, um, and then five feet from the rear. So from original two or three feet from the rear to five. And then from two feet on the north property line and three feet on the south property line, conforming more to five feet per this, uh, per this request. And it would still meet the front setback of twenty-five feet. The applicant is also proposing to have, um, additional stormwater features to capture additional runoff and make sure that everything is contained onsite during construction. So it was sent to public agencies, um, uh, project was sent to public agencies and no agencies of jurisdiction had any concern. However, the, during time of development, the applicant would be required to conform to building standards and fire district requirements, as stated, um, in the, in the project file. Seven comments were, um, uh, were supplied to, or were submitted to community development in opposition. The main concern was the lack of privacy and the potential to create a fire hazard from, you know, developing a, a, a structure so close, um, to the, uh, existing residents directly to the west. However, building comments have come in, uh, the Building Department has stated that if the structure is conforming to their standards, then a fire hazard is, uh, mitigated. And lack of privacy, the, the, uh, the, uh, consistent with development of the time, the tiny lot size. So it's, it's expected that this kind of development will occur in this area. And so staff has no concern, um, at that point. So the staff analysis has brought it to where, um, the conclusion that undue hardship exists because it's existing tiny lot, um, that was conforming at the time of development in this area. It's not self-imposed and the request is not in conflict with the public interest as it is i- in line with the pattern of development. And of cour, environmental and social impacts will be mitigated at time of development. Uh, the hearing exam, this project was brought, uh, proposal was brought before the hearing examiner on June twenty-first and a recommendation of approval was provided. And I stand for any questions that you have, or any that you have.
Can you go back to your zoning map?
I can, yes.
It looks like the road kind of cuts through that, that lot. Is that correct?
So, uh, a site visit confirmed that the road actually is, um, immediately adjacent to the property line.
Okay.
Yes. Um, I know the G I S maps maybe make it a little convoluted, but, um, site visit has confirmed that it meets that. So from the edge of road surface without a defined right-of-way, um, we will take it from the edge of road surface, so twenty-five feet, um, from that. So they still are gonna re, uh, meet that standard.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we are in deliberations. Thoughts?
Well, it's actually a, a larger buffer than what was approved before. So I see no reason to say no.
I agree. Motion?
Uh, I move that we approve V A R two three dash zero zero one two, Carr.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, uh, now to our business section. And because the Stricklands are here, I would ask that we hire, uh, that we handle item seven, uh, first, if that staff agrees. Okay? Then item seven is rescission of lot consolidation agreement. And I will let Mr. Tarbutton lead us.
Good morning Commissioners, Ben Tarbutton, Community Development, for the record. Um, this is a matter that was brought before you a couple of weeks back. Um, just for, uh, a reminder, this is a, uh, two properties, two parcels, platted lots that were consolidated in the Bonanza Ranch area through a lot consolidation agreement. The, the question, I think, from the board was to find out a little bit more history uh, about the intent of consolidating and if we could get maybe some kind of statement from the owner, uh, kind of alluding to that. They, they did provide a statement. While they didn't really go into the history of the intent of consolidation, um, I did have a chance to speak with Mr. Strickland. From what our discussion included was that, uh, it appears that the intent of consolidation was to, to alleviate the requirement of a special notice permit. Because if you were to construct a, a personal storage building on a lot that did not have a primary use established, then it would require a special notice permit. There was a dwelling on the other lot that they own both of those. So they went through the process of consolidating to alleviate that need. I also did discuss with the assessors about any kind of tax implications or savings, um, that they wouldn't be paying perhaps. And based on my discussion with the assessor records, uh, the assessor, that, um, there really is no difference in the amount of tax, um, saved. They essentially grant the same value per lot, whether they're consolidated or not. And I think that's unique to Bonanza Ranch because they're not eligible for, uh, primary dwellings just because the soils are so bad, they can't get perked. And so, um, I think they just grant the same value for every single lot. And it doesn't add or subtract any value whether they're consolidated. So, um, I don't know, again, if, if you have any questions, if you had a chance to read through Mr. Strickland's letter here, if you do have any questions on that. Of course, the Stricklands are here if you have any questions, uh, of them. But, um, certainly, if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Questions?
No, when I went through the documentation, that was one of the things that stood out was that Panhandle Health would not allow a, you know, a development on the lot. So that answered my question. But I do agree that it, it brings up a good point where we want our language to be a little tighter, uh, for those types of situations. So I don't, I don't have any problem, uh, you know, moving this forward.
Okay. Is there, uh, any downside to the rescission?
Well, I suppose that it, it's possible that it could set a precedence for other applicants or other property owners that have gone through the lot consolidation agreement that would like the same, uh, treatment. So as far as that, I suppose that's always an option or a possibility. As far as any other downside, I don't know that there's really any other downside, um, but.
Just out of curiosity though, um, kind of pigging back on Commissioner Duncan's question. If other people were to kind of have the me too on this, uh, I think it's pretty obvious in this particular situation, this particular lot was not buildable. So, um, are there other ones out there where they're buildable? And, and people could make that argument, because I don't see how they could.
Yeah, well, th- they are still buildable. What you're referring, they're not eligible for a, um, you know, subsurface wastewater disposal system.
Yeah.
And so Ph D will not sign off on a dwelling that is proposing that type of waste management.
Yes.
They still are eligible for other types of building permits, including, which unfortunate, I don't know, unfortunately is the right word, but, um, including requests for personal storage buildings. Because again, since most property owners are not able to develop, develop single-family dwellings, they will exercise allowed uses like a personal storage building and then use it as a garage or shop or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And Commissioners, Ph D will sign off on a home on these lots if the owner comes up with another treatment system that meets law, which can be an incinerator system, for instance. They're very expensive, but it's the kind of thing that can be done.
Yeah, okay.
I, I would just add that, hey, you know, to me, even, even with the other considerations that are, that have been articulated, which are all valid, I, you know, the fact that it's, you know, would be difficult to build on residence on at the very least, uh, and very expensive. Plus, you know, the fact that it would revert to two platted lots, pre, you know, that were previously platted prior to zoning. You know, I just, I just don't see a big downside. I think, I think, you know, if there are any others to come in the wake of this, they should be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. But if you look at the map of Bonanza Ranch, um, you know, I don't really see any other, maybe one. You know, there's one other consolidated property that I see okay too, but there's not a lot.
Again, it's a case-by-case basis though, and, and I, I find this case to be, um, very relevant and, um, in my opinion, needing of the rescission.
Yeah, it's just, you know, I think when the, uh, when it was initiated, the language will continue to be in fact until the subsequent re-division is accomplished. It came across as, this is just a way to get around something and don't worry about it. And we, we don't really want that as a matter of practice. You know?
We'll change the language on the form.
Yes.
Perfect.
So.
Okay, motion?
Uh, I move that we approve the, uh, rescission of lot consolidation agreement.
Uh, do you need an A I N or anything?
I think it would be helpful to have maybe a reference to the parcel itself. That way we can tie it to.
Yeah, the A, the A I Ns are one, two, nine, eight, one, six, and one, four, eight, three, seven.
One, two, nine, eight, one, six, and what was the second one?
One, four, eight, three, seven, eight.
Okay, I second that motion, that motion. Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right. We'll go back to item four, S C J consultants. It's an overlay discussion.
Commissioners, David Callahan, the reason I put S C J on here is only because they've been helpful in the past with other projects we've done. We could use any consultant. What I really am going with this is the whole idea of using a consultant to help the staff come up with the overlay zones for areas like the one we just did the variance on. I venture to say we have a half dozen areas in the county or so where the zoning frankly just doesn't work well. And the proper and historic usual solution to that is to change the zoning rather than continuously grant variances. We just, as a staff, haven't had the firepower, if you will, to go through all of that. Interestingly, in the last several weeks, one of our planners found the time to, to get a start on that. And so we have one area that we're actually working on. And we can continue to do it in-house if that's your preference. But I, the reason I wanted to have this conversation with you today is we could also ask S C Js, if you were to help us out on this, here's the parameters of what we need, what would you charge us? And then I'd bring that number back to you and see if you're receptive to that. That way we could move this along more expediently.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with getting a, a quote on that. If we end up, are able to handle it in-house, I think that's preferred. But it's no harm in trying because if it's gonna take, you know, a hundred staff hours, but they can do it for less money, uh, because they have more efficiencies built in or whatever, then I think it's worth talking about.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, item five, business licensing discussion.
Unlike many other municipalities in this country, we don't have a mechanism at the moment when there's a change of occupancy from, say, retail to office or office to retail or what have you. For us to know that that has occurred, the problem that creates is the building code and the land use code have different requirements for different occupancies, different uses, if you will. And then this came to me by way of our chief building official who had mentioned that she's been seeing more and more of these kinds of cases. I'm sorry, I don't have mathematical numbers behind it at the moment, but we can certainly do that. The only reason I put down business licensing as, is that it's one way that many municipalities have a means to track when new businesses come to town. And then by issuing that license, they route it to the zoning planning group to make sure that it meets code. Another way to do it frankly is fifty years old, the place I used to work for, where it just says in the development code, except for the single-family and duplex uses, a person shall not use or change the use of a building, a portion of a building or land without obtaining a certificate of occupancy. So there's, where I'm going with this is there's multiple ways to get to the issue. And we can certainly explore different ways and come back to you. The main thing I wanted to get across today is that we have these situations where today, where occupancy is changing and potentially puts people in harm's way. For example, if you have a little light industrial strip center and one of the areas goes vacant and moves in a welding shop next to a paint shop. Those are two very volatile things. You could have an explosion and kill people. The, the building code requires a fire-rated wall between those two uses. But oftentimes, we never know about it because we don't have any trigger right now to know. So that's the, the fundamental issue. I just wanted to get it in front of you, see what you think about it. And the only, we don't need an action item today. The only reason we listed it that way is in case you want to give us direction. But mostly I just wanted to get the issue in front of you so you could be thinking about it and then we could have this conversation again or whatever's your pleasure.
For the first time, I understand why I've been asked to apply for a business license in so many other jurisdictions. I mean, you know, it, it's not a lot of money, but it's important to understand the uses. And a lot of times, um, you know, these things are implemented not necessarily, you know, because people want to grow government and make it more intrusive, but because a, a lot of times it's for safety, believe it or not. And you just have to apply it everywhere. And it is true, people, you know, they want to start their business and they will run that business in ways that may not be compatible with surrounding businesses. I'd hate to see us have to, you know, grow, go to that point because to me it's so different than like having a helicopter, which puts us at the same level as other, you know, larger cities. But I do think it would be prudent to at least get numbers behind these so that we're not making big decisions off of some anecdotal stories, you know, that we can actually show that we're, we're seeing this in a more repetitive situation. And, uh, and then we can look at that.
Yeah, I would agree. I'd like to see the numbers and take the least intrusive means of accomplishing not having welding next to painting unless there are sufficient.
Yeah. And you know, in a weird way, it's actually been more of a pain for my business to not have a business license. Because other organizations actually, they see that as a way of running your business, uh, properly. And that when you don't have a business license, it, it comes across as being kind of a renegade business that's not following, uh, the rules and procedures.
And I believe there's some area jurisdictions that actually don't even charge for their business license.
Right.
So that's.
It tends to be more common in cities, even here in North Idaho. Most cities have some sort of business licensing or registration requirement. It's a, vary from city to city, but they tend not to be as common in counties, in unincorporated areas of counties, so.
And it's business type too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's true too. I, I suppose we could narrow it down to something that would be, um.
You know, more, and, yeah, industrial like.
Or some.
Yes.
Uses?
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that, that's, you know, that could be an option as well. We already have in our code, we already, not the land use and development code, but in the county code, uh, we do have, you know, some regulations for a few different kinds of bus, businesses, mainly, mainly ones that, you know, are establishments that serve alcohol or pawnbrokers. So, but it's, you know, that's really, really narrow, so.
And it can tie into our critical materials ordinance as well.
True. That's, yeah, that, that's true too. I mean, that could be one way of addressing the issue.
Right, if we, if you. Right, if we, if you have critical materials, then you apply for this license for a nominal fee, just so we are aware of.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's an option.
Okay.
Okay.
That helps us, thank you.
Okay. Speaking of critical materials ordinance, Pat, how close are we?
Um, I'm going on vacation next week, but I'm hoping to have it ready for, you know, to go to public hearing when I get back, so.
Okay. All right.
As soon thereafter as possible.
All right, thank you. All right, last item, item six, emergency ordinance, ten acre in ag zone.
Oh, I didn't see that on, actually, I don't have that.
Oh! Was it?
That's an old agenda.
Oh goodness, well then I was, uh, talking about all kinds of stuff that wasn't on the agenda.
I think that'll be on your agenda next-
Next-
Yeah, next.
Business meeting.
Yeah.
Next week.
I have three agendas here. That's fabulous. Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't on the post agenda.
Yeah. Okay.
But just the upshot of that is we do have a draft ready for your consideration. They'll, they'll bring it on Tuesday while, while I'm out, but I'm sure David-
I can deal with that.
Okay.
Handle that easily enough.
Eleven-eleven, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.